Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. If you're interested in joining the study session or our weekly tournament, send an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com. We are continuing our match here, which is at the Crawford game. The, uh, the white team, which is me, and this week it's gonna be Eric and Jed. Our one-away Crawford and the red team, which is everyone else, is, um, seven-away Crawford. Okay, and so the red team, which is everybody except the three of us, has a three-one to play, and I will take suggestions for moves here to put in the Slido that you all can vote on. And you may have to unmute yourself because I had to mute everyone for the intro.
Right off the bat, eleven-seven presents itself in sort of six-three, four-three.
Okay, so those are two pretty obvious-looking candidates.
Yeah, I like the eleven-seven.
I'm gonna throw one more out there, just as a suggestion. I don't know if it's right, but oftentimes you like to get to the edge of the prime, twenty-four, twenty-one, eleven.
Do the three-point.
Okay, so I've got all of those. Got all of those in the Slido now, so if you'd like to vote, you can.
I, I, I was gonna, um, maybe suggest.
You got another one, Bill?
No, 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 not second thought, and I don't.
Okay. Okay, so you should all be casting some votes on Slido now for your favorite play. Okay, so the votes are coming in. All right, we got a few votes for eleven-seven. Okay, I think that'll be the move we'll make here. Yeah, that seems to have taken over here.
Uh, Jason, we can see our OBS interface on the bottom of the screen.
What are you? Okay, hang on, maybe I'm sharing the wrong stuff here. Let me try. How is this? Oh, fantastic. Yeah, user error. Okay, all, all these top plays are just about the same, so looking pretty good here. Okay, two-one for the, uh, white team. So now this is me and Eric and Jed.
Just, um, enter under twenty-three and six-five.
What about coming to the twenty-two point?
Uh, we're coming under the gun too much, I think.
Uh, we also don't care about getting gammoned. Our, our objective here is to win the game.
But we're not gonna win the game if we're stuck on the bar because they pointed on us, so I, I don't think so.
What about coming down to the eleven point?
Yeah, that's better. Um, I could, I can get behind that, yeah.
Okay, where's our other guy? Where's Jed?
Uh, hello.
Jed, you've got some vicious feedback going on there.
Actually, that was really cool. It reminded me that I'm due some flashbacks.
So I'm, I'm voting on the move here.
Yeah, well, you're, you're with us. You're with the team of, of three, me and Eric.
Oh, uh, two-one here?
Yeah, we're two-one to play.
Oh, yeah, you gotta tempo hit. Uh, you gotta hit the three-point here.
Uh, no, we're on the bar. We can't tempo hit.
Oh, you're on the bar. Oh, shoot.
Not, not you, we.
Oh, we're, we're on the bar. We're on the bar. All right. Uh, I guess, then I guess I would just play, uh, I'd come in on the two-point, of course.
The, the twenty-three point?
Wait, what's the pip count? I can't see the pip count.
Uh, it's at the top and the bottom of the screen. Um, we're way behind in the pip count. I mean, we've got three.
Oh, okay, so, uh, comment on the one point?
The, the twenty-four point.
Yeah, 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 twenty-four point. And, uh, with the two, uh, I guess that we could just, uh, go to the eleven point.
So Eric, you were okay with this play?
Yeah, I mean, we are so behind in the race, we can be bolder, I guess.
Yeah, we gotta have the goalkeeper.
All right, well, uh, I, I guess I'll be outvoted here. I wanna come to the twenty-two point. I see what Eric is saying about getting pointed on there, but I, I, that would be my play. That would be something I'd wanna avoid at a different score, but not at this score. But all right, I'm, I'll go along with you guys. Let's see how this rolls. Yeah, looks pretty good. My play's not that far behind.
Yeah.
Pretty close. Okay, six-three for the red team.
Uh, sorry, didn't see what the coming under the gun play would.
Oh, coming under the gun. It's, it's pretty close, twenty-one milli-points behind.
Uh, okay. Oh, yeah, that's the second.
Definitely, uh, that's a small mistake.
So what about twenty-three and, and six-five? Uh, there it is. It's the fourth play, okay, yeah.
All right, six-three to play for the red team.
Yeah, I think thirteen-seven, thirteen-ten. I, if, by the way, if you had gone to the twenty-three, I would do a completely different, I would do twenty-two, thirteen.
Uh-huh. Let's put that in there.
But with you having two set, you know, double shot added, I don't think I would. Single shot, I would.
Okay, so the Slido is rolling.
Seven-one, four-one can be the third option.
All right. So usual sort of thing here, if, if for those of you who are new, if you, if you don't like any of the plays that I've suggested, you should certainly let me know, and I can add your preferred play to the list. Okay, so the voting is open. Ooh, this is close. It's close between thirteen-ten, thirteen-seven, and making the one point. Oh, I think, uh, two-down has taken over.
Yep.
All right, let's make that play. I, I think that's a very good play. It completes a five-prime with the opponent not at the edge of the prime.
Right.
That's real, that's really strong. You do have to seriously consider twenty-two to thirteen. There's a principle that says always run the last checker, especially when you have a big, big race lead. This blot on the seven point, though, sort of compels you to do something about that. Okay, this looks like it's won the vote, so let's do it and take a peek. Yeah. Good play.
Uh, running isn't that far behind, though.
No, it's not that far behind, which, which points out how important it is to get you the last checker out, especially when it's behind even, even a four-prime.
Yeah.
I don't know if it seems to be the lack of value of a gammon, because it's over six percentage points more gammon than what we just did.
Right.
The win difference, though, isn't as big.
Right, and it's the win, it's the wins that really matters at this score.
Yeah.
Okay, double threes for the white team.
Uh, actually, uh, we're talking about red, so gammons still matter for red.
They matter a little bit, but not enough. When you're odd-away Crawford, they don't, they don't give you very much value.
Okay.
All you're, all you're gaining is you're removing the free drop, uh, in the, in the succeeding games, which does have some value, but, uh, not very much.
Oh, that's right, you're right, yeah. Okay.
We're in a tough position here.
Well, I guess we can hit and, uh, make the four-point. Strengthen our board.
Four-point, and then what?
And then either eight to five or eleven to eight. Let's see which one. This gives us more builders to, if, if things work out, it gives us more builders. Hmm, this is safer, but with fewer builders.
I disagree.
Okay.
Uh, I think that you hit on the three-point. I think that could be right. And then you play two-down. And then eleven-eight.
All right.
Uh, we'll see.
In, in the interest of trying to get some smug equity, I would like to consider a play like this not hitting at all.
Yeah, that could be right, too. I didn't.
And, uh, uh, maybe, maybe even this. Um, kind of a tough position here.
I would, I would keep, I would keep the ten-point, though, because if you roll six, if you roll, like, sweet, there was, yeah, I would keep so, because you're all six-one.
Mm-hmm, yeah, six-one state block, or even any ace where they wanna try to step up, then it, it, uh, it stays as a blocking point. I, I don't know how this is gonna work out, though. I mean, uh, we're, we're a little stuck in the timing battle, too. Um, you know, the red has a few checks.
Yeah, that's why I think I would hit me, like, if, like, I don't know, it could be tricky. I don't know if I should.
Yeah, this is, this is tricky.
My, my first instinct is to hit here, though. You gotta, my first instinct is definitely to hit here.
All right.
Prime versus prime is the hardest position type, according to Mark Olson, so, yeah.
Yeah. So if we hit, then what about, what about a play like this?
Yeah.
Uh, that's okay, too. I mean, that's, it was, it was, uh, Jat's.
I just, I just don't.
It's okay as well.
I don't feel good breaking our, uh, our, like, our four-prime here, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, uh, is this a reasonable compromise play?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, Jed, yeah, you good?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
All right, let's try it. I don't know, these are tough.
Yeah.
Uh, hey, look at that, nailed it.
Wow. Nice work.
Well done.
Uh, however, making the four is also very close.
Very close, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so making, making the four-point wins more games, it loses more gammons. Now, the gammons are not worth it for, for white. They're not, just not worth as much as they usually are. That might be, I want to be some of it. Okay, five-four to play for the, uh, for the red team.
Go running.
Yeah, I agree with Stephen. Make your four-point, come in on the twenty-one and get out of there.
Okay.
I, I can't imagine anything else isn't a blunder.
Okay. I agree. In and out, in and out has, in and out has to be correct.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm open the Slido, but I'm expecting this to be.
Unanimous.
Yes, it really should be. This is, you wanna, you wanna run with that last checker and get him out of there.
Especially because of the two options you put to vote on, only one's legal.
Uh, what? Oh, yeah. There you go. All right, everybody likes coming on out, so there we go.
All right, double ones, double ones.
Yeah, not, not even close. All right, double threes.
A game.
Oh, let's see. This is not very good. We're kind of cooked here. I think that you just, like, make the four-point, the four-point here. Just, it's pretty, just straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we, we might be able to get a shot, um. Yeah, this seems fine. Yeah, good?
Yep, nice.
Okay. And, uh, yeah, so seems fine. It, it doesn't really matter very much.
Oh, it's equal. Wow.
Yeah, it, it's because, it's because a lot of these plays are gonna transpose down the line. It just doesn't really matter. Okay, six and forty.
Transpose down the line.
Well, the action is not gonna happen anytime soon on our side of the board, so, you know, maybe if we make a slightly different play, we, uh, maybe next time we roll something else, and we could have gotten back to where we would have been. So it, it kinda doesn't really matter. We're gonna, we're gonna be making our four-point or our three-point, uh, the next few rolls. So.
They're not gonna leave a shot in the next few rolls, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixteen-six. Stevens wrote it, and it's, yeah, there's really not much else I see.
Yeah.
Sixteen-six. I don't know, can I come up with a plausible alternative? Probably not.
I don't see one.
What about sixteen-twelve? And then, uh, ten-four. Okay, I got that in there. Oh, sorry.
Are, Adam, are you suggesting it just because it's an alternative, or do you see some reason you like having that extra on the four instead of an extra on the six?
Um, well, I like having the sixteen on the twelve more than the not, the spare on the ten, because if, say he gets a two-six or a one-six and he jumps out, I think you have a better chance of hitting him with a three than a one. Because there's more rolls, so you have double ones, you have, you know all the rolls. Anyway, that's my only rationale for that, was if he pops out with a one-six or a two-six, you have a better chance of hitting him.
Look, he's not popping out on the one-six. Uh, you're right.
He might pop out on a two-six.
On a two-six, he, I, I think, I, I see your point. I think it's just playing to a rather, um.
You'd rather, you'd rather stack him up on the six. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Rather than stacking up on the four.
Right, I see, I, I do see your point, but it's a very specific combo, and I, other, for other reasons, I'd rather the six, so you're right, it probably won't be a big difference, though, for that reason.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, um, sorry, I'll vote, sorry.
Can't hear you.
Couldn't get anybody to vote for that other play, sixteen-twelve, ten-four, so I think we're gonna go with the sixteen to six here. And, uh, what do we need to hit? A, a, a one-seven or a two-seven? Piece of cake.
But they need to hit. Don't have the enemy. Though, I don't think you belong to the enemy team, Jason.
Okay, this might be our worst roll.
Ouch. Yes.
Well, I mean, I guess you just make both the points, but we're kinda cooked now, so, I mean, yeah.
Okay, the, the way, the way to make this play is three of them are forced. Those three are forced.
Yeah.
And now the other one, I think it's pretty clear, just gonna make the ace point.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we might get some, uh, a weird shot here, so just make that point. And then the other thing that's gonna happen is, you know, we're gonna try to get our checkers in and kill sixes, so that we might slow down just a little bit. But this, this is really a pretty terrible rule.
Yeah, our timing is horrible, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right. I think this is a little awkward.
Hmm, ten-four, eight-five.
Yep.
Exactly.
Delay, 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 delay.
Yep. Absolutely.
Probably the only.
Just, just to be odd, seven-one, four-one, but I'm not saying that's the move. I'm just saying that's an option.
Okay, let's put that in there.
What's an option?
Seven-one, four-one. It, it's, it's more of an option if they're not, for not looking at a five-point board on their side.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just wanted to point out that.
Yep, it, it, oh, yeah, it's definitely, we shouldn't, we should at least think about it and then reject it, as opposed to not even think about it.
I, I agree. And I'm voting for ten, ten-four, eight-five anyway.
Also the status of gammons, right, and how valuable they are, which is not very valuable, so, um, part of the appeal of, uh, pointing on the, on the one point is you're gonna win more gammons. Okay, ten-four, eight-five it is.
You're gonna check the?
Yeah. Yeah. Making the ace point is a whopper, almost double whopper.
Blotting with three is, is not that bad, but we still keep the five.
Uh, I mean, if we break our anchor, like, it's like, the only, like, makes our winning chances higher, kind of, but like, we're getting gammon, maybe, so.
We don't care.
Oh, we don't care about getting.
Well, it's, oh, yeah, so I say that, you should.
It's because it's odd-away Crawford.
Run all the way, I'd say. Run all the way here.
I, I'm, I'm on board with that. I wanna, I wanna preserve.
Yeah, our timing is so bad, we have to.
Yes.
Um, not to mention, we, uh, we have to run out. Oh, no, we don't have to run out. I guess we could, we could do something like this, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh,
It's not right.
Look, they've, they've got some rolls that'll leave some, at least some indirect.
What about, wha- what about eight-two, twenty-four, twenty-three, so we don't get pointed on and get stuck on the bar from, by, by red? And then, uh, once they clear the seventeen, which will happen next turn, we can maybe roll a six and get some timing.
I feel pretty confident this play is not right.
Yeah.
All right.
I think this is the, I think this is the.
I think we just have to hope that this works out for us. It's like the only chance.
Yeah, look, there, there's some awkwardness in there. If they roll six-five, they're gonna, they're gonna leave an indirect shot. Yeah, they might point on us.
Six-one's direct.
Yeah, six-one.
So like, they have, like, they have, like, twen- they have, like, twenty-five shots to point on us, but like, some of them leave, like, flyshots off the bar.
Right, right.
How do you know it's twenty-five shots, Jed? How did, how did you calculate it?
Maybe he has.
He's muted.
Uh, hello?
So how did you calculate it was twenty-five shots?
Well, it's around twenty-five, since there's, uh, five, uh, so you see how there's five stacks and they have spares on them? So you do five squared. That's twenty-five. So that's, that's the math.
Uh, yes, but that's for one checker, and then there's the other one, so I think that's more than twenty-five.
Yeah, well, like, there's roles to make, like, how do I, there's like, how do I explain this? Uh, like, some moves you can make, like, like, you can make, like, both with them, like, say you roll, like, I don't know, double fives. You could, like, hit the, you could choose which one to hit, like, some of those twenty-five rolls, um, like, do the same thing for, you can hit either one of them, so, yeah, it might be a bit more, but honestly, off the top of my head, that's the number. It's like, makes sense of the calculation.
Chad, how long's that smoke detector been going off?
Me? Smoke detector?
Yeah, I think that's me, it sounds like.
That's not me.
How long you been living like that, Rick?
Seven years, why?
Oh my god. I, I, I don't even know you, man.
Now, I, I'm just hearing these for the first time this hour.
Okay, all right, we're gonna run out. I like this play. Eric, you good?
Yeah.
Uh, look at that. Okay, eight-one. Uh, smaller, not terrible, but I, I think this is the right idea. Stay back, try to produce shots. Okay, five-three for the red team. This should be fun. Or maybe it's not. Maybe it's, maybe it's obvious.
I, I'm, I'm playing it safe and pointing on the one.
Four-one. No, yeah, that's three.
Yeah, yeah, point on the one.
Okay. Yep.
And maybe, oh.
Yep.
Makes some, another fun option to point on the two-point. Okay, the Slido is open. All right, everybody likes that one. All right, pointing on the ace point. Gotta be pretty good. Nice and safe. Okay, and, yeah, not close. I tried to sucker you all with the pointing on the two, but it didn't fall for it. I tried. All right, we danced, and now there's a three-one to play.
Uh, let me see how many more are gammons.
Oh, wait, wait, actually.
Would win.
Six-three, four-three, or five-two, two-one?
Six-three, four-three, for sure.
Um, Jason, can you go back on the five-three play? I just wanna see how many more gammons pointing on the two would win red if the gammons mattered. Uh, then.
Your gammons.
Actually, fewer gammons, okay.
It's, it's because sometimes you lose, right?
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah. Okay, back to the, uh, three-one. All right, so what do we got? We got, uh, six-three, four-three. And what was the other one? Pick and pass?
Pick and pass.
Okay.
I wanna at least consider it before rejecting it.
Yeah, okay.
Two-up is very nice, even if we're just going for the win, not the gammon, but.
Yeah, so what, you're following the principle of, uh, two on the bar is better by far?
I'm at least thinking about it.
Yeah.
Five-prime gives lots of landing spaces, though.
Yeah, if we, um, if we only had one gap, I would agree with the pick and pass, but with two gaps, it becomes precarious.
Yeah, and it also, if things go wrong, we're now burning checkers rapidly by putting a third on the ace, so.
Exactly.
That's true. All right, the votes are all for making the three-point, so there we go.
Take a look.
And, yeah, your pick and pass was, uh, within reason. It doesn't win more gammons, how about that?
Yeah, that's weird.
All right, six and two. So close, so close. Oh, the white team danced again, by the way, I guess.
Come on, let us get it, too. Oh, we danced, nevermind.
Yeah. That's not good.
Seven-five, seven-one.
He said, Stephen suggested clear the seven.
Yeah, okay, I got the Slido open.
Yeah, tucked myself into the other. Tom could tie me into the other, but I can't.
No. All right, almost all the votes for clearing the seven, so here we go. It does look a little awkward, right?
Yeah, it does.
But it, but it's also safer now.
Yeah, getting hit would be real awkward, too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a good way of putting it. All right, uh-oh. Eight-two, five-three, eight-six, eight-two.
Eight-two, five-three, good lord.
Yeah, we got, we got a wow from Stephen. I'm, I'm bowing this, too.
Yeah, I, I should have known better. More, more times than not, when I've played a match and I had a situation like this, I, I, no matter how many times I've seen it, I can't make myself do it, and I know it's probably wrong.
We're with, we're within one percentage point on the wins, but the, it's the gammons, the twenty-five percentage point choked gammons for hitting.
Hmm, interesting.
That's tough to do.
Difference between thirty-five and nearly sixty.
That's real tough to do, looking at a five-point board. It costs you the game.
Yeah, it's tough, because you, like I, so I've been talking about the gammons. They are less valuable than usual, but they're not worthless. They are worth something.
Your wins don't go up all that much, um, in fact, your wi- your wins are higher with us doing this than if we do the other.
And I have to believe also, it's because it makes the eight-point harder to clear.
Yeah, it's so awkward.
That's why I was saying, I mean, this is an awkward-looking structure.
But it's so hard to fo- make yourself leave that direct shot with a, looking at a five-point board across the way.
Yes.
But sometimes you don't need skill. You just roll the dice like this, right? And you, now you clear the, you got the eight-point cleared, yeah?
I, yeah.
Yep, clear.
I suppose the idea is that we are more likely to come in on the air three and hit another blot and, and get out safely before they enter both their checkers on the twenty-three, so that's why it's not as bad to hit, lose on the twenty-three.
Yeah. Okay, double two is to play off the bar.
These, these double twos, though, what if, you know.
Uh, I think that you come in with one and you play the, I can't see, give me a second. You cut, you do eight to six?
Yeah, I like eight to six.
And sixteen-twelve.
Yeah. I like the play. Uh, the one reason I like this play is it just brings a checker in, uh, for saving the gammon, which we've seen, you know, there's, we, we do wanna try to save the gammon. Um, and, uh, this gives us threes to cover, and our threes are blocked back here, so we can't use them otherwise. We might wanna be hopping out with a checker. We are also not going to be hitting with a three, right? Um, where are we gonna be hitting with it? We'll be hitting with a four, because they might roll a six-four. Um, so perfectly fine to have this here. Eric, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
All right, great, let's do it. How wrong can it be?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, good enough. I'm not worried about these kind of. All right, six-five, that plays itself.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, four-two. I'm not enthusiastic about this roll.
Uh, well, eight, six-four.
Twelve-eight, six-four?
I agree.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Give us two covers for the three-point.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back and look, yeah. Again, not a huge difference. Okay, six-two for the red team.
Oh.
Only two legal.
Five-boss, five-three.
Five-boss, five-three.
Yeah, I think, I think the three-one leaves even numbers on the, um, but I wanna count the cell.
Okay, so here.
That's, I think, I prefer this one, yes.
Yes, I do, too.
I'm not in this team, never mind.
Um, threes are awkward.
Yeah, so six-three, five-three, four-three, oh, no, four-three doesn't leave a shot.
Right, so six-three, five-three, three-two's okay, three-one's okay.
Uh, three-one's okay, but you're gonna, you're, you're not so pleased with that roll.
That's true.
Um.
Actually, it may be safer than this version, than this page.
Now, what about the other version, if you do this?
Six-five, six-four, five-four, four-four, five-five, six-six, that's already nine.
That is, yeah, it's nine.
Um, I think, um, I think that's.
Press play.
No, you don't wanna leave yourself.
Press play, no, you don't wanna leave yourself, you have to just like take your medicine.
Four-two is an eleventh role.
Four-two in, in, no, four-two plays safe either way, doesn't it?
No, I, I think if you, the one you just did, I think a four-two's a bad one.
No, you play five-one, three-one.
Oh no, I can do a four-two, I can do a four-two, five-one through one, yeah.
Yeah, it's usually really bad to leave a spare on the last one, so I would do the first move.
Yep.
This one.
Yes, definitely.
Right.
But again, I forgot.
I would, I would vote for the, the first play, where it leaves five on. Yeah.
Needs to be even.
Yeah, uh, but it's so awkward going forward, like the threes are horrible.
Okay, we're voting on the slide-o. So far, everyone's voting to go to the ace point. This looks like the play. Does leave fewer shots.
This way, we can just roll double fives or sixes, followed by double fours, fives or, or sixes and be done with it.
Oh, genius. Okay, everybody likes this play.
Okay.
And, uh-huh.
Wow.
Wow. Doesn't, doesn't matter.
Interesting.
Yeah, that is interesting.
What, what are the roles that are so bad in the first iteration that? To, to make it so it doesn't matter, like, can you see the dice distribution, so we get a better overview? Like, of the second, the, the one with the, the four spare on the last point.
Oh, well, I, I'm not set up to show the dice distribution here.
Oh.
I'm doing a direct screenshot.
Can't see an overlay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I could, but it, it takes some work. Alright, so we're gonna cover, right? We're, we're ready now for their, for their awkwardness, alright.
Six-two.
That's not awkward, alright.
That's a nice role.
That's easy.
Feel free to roll six-three.
Hmm, should we? Top out?
Yes, because we don't, we're not gonna be generating any double shots here. So I think we go, hold together our board, this also, um, will save a few gammons by running out.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah, don't break your board, yeah, of course.
Okay, goodbye. And.
Nice.
Yes. Uh, look at these luck boxes.
And since the gammons are not full value, we play it safe rather than bearing off after hitting. I think so, yeah, five, if we needed the gammon, I could be tempted to bear off with both.
So this is the play you're suggesting?
Yeah.
As opposed to the other play?
As opposed to four-two-two off, four-two-two off.
Okay, let me put tho, let me put both of those in, so here's what, here's what that play looks like, so this is, this is a more aggressive bear-off play.
Makes it easier for you to come in where you'll get an overturned shot. And it, it's just too aggressive for the position.
Hmm.
Okay, alright, the slide-o's open.
Gammons only take away, gain like one point five percent, cuz it takes away the free pass.
Yeah, takes away the free pass.
So you're saying four to two with two?
And then, this, this is the play that seems to be.
Yeah, I like that too, but.
Alright, everybody voted for that, so, alright, let's do it. Alright, well, we're out. And let's get the crossover.
Yep, it's pretty automatic from here on, okay.
Yep.
Alright, okay, it's not gin yet, is it gin? No, yeah, it's gin. Alright, well, that's over.
Wow.
Okay, uh, alright, we got time to start another game, so, let's go. Okay.
We're at post Crawford.
Post Crawford.
Chip it. Gotta double.
Gotta double, okay, and because you're even away, you have to ship it. If you're odd away, you can, uh, you can play games, you, if you know about the trick. And if you don't know about the trick, then don't mess around and just cube. And we are definitely taking this, cuz we got the good opening roll, easy take. Okay, now, now it's game on, so now, unlike what we were talking about before, gammons do matter now, and the. The red team really would like to win a gammon, that'd be good.
I'd go thirteen-eight, twenty-four, twenty-two, or twenty-four, twenty-two, thirteen-eight.
Yeah.
I would drop two down.
I like thirteen-eleven, thirteen-eight also.
Okay, the slide-o's open. Okay, this one's close. Two down is, so if this was a normal score, you'd probably wanna split those back checkers. Once your opponent made, uh, a good inner board point, you're compelled to split to try to get an advanced anchor.
Right.
But here, the situation could be different, because you would like to win a gammon. And part of the value of splitting is to, uh, prevent your opponent from winning gammons. Well, you don't care about losing gammons, so some of the value of splitting is muted because of that. Okay, this is real close on the vote, but looks like, uh, four votes to three to bring two down, alright, let's do it. And let's see what XG likes. Eh, pretty close.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I wouldn't worry about differences like this, anytime I see differences.
I don't even think we get smug equity for this.
No, not really, you can, you can, Adam, you can have a little bit of smug equity, it's fine.
Close.
Yeah. What it says is, you know, the, the usual rules may not quite apply to this position. Okay, four-two.
That's a given, isn't it?
Um.
Make, make the four-point in a different universe.
Make the four-point in a different universe, is what.
Yeah, so I think, I think.
I agree.
I think we split with the two. Uh, I, I would say thirteen-nine here.
Yeah, I like thirteen-nine.
Cause I don't wanna step into the nine shots there, well, the eight shots, actually.
Right, you don't wanna go to the twenty-point for sure, because your opponent has three. Spots aimed at that, and they have ten in the zone, that's dangerous, especially with their gammons being worth something now. The builder on the nine-point is useful, um.
Hmm, I'm not sure, because. Red has a blitzing structure and Michi says never split against the blitzing structures. It's, he tried to drill this into my head with the book.
This is, uh, from chapter one of Michi's opening concepts book, don't split against the blitzing structure.
If he wants that, then the only play for that is, uh, we have to play two down, but like.
Yeah, so that's the alternative, is two down.
I don't, I don't, that's right, I don't know. I don't know, I, it's, I, I get where he's coming from also, because like, we gotta play like. We can't like help our opponent's strategy, but like. I feel like that, we should still split here, I don't know, that's just my play.
Alright, well, I, I'm with Jed here, I wanna split, uh, I wanna split now. While it's a little less dangerous, we have a better board, they haven't made an inner board point yet. They are threatening to make an inner board point, but they're not there. And the only roles that, you know, are really crushing are double fives, double threes, and five-three. And even five-three is, it's not that bad, um, I'm ready to, I'm ready to take my lumps here, uh. But we, because we have the better board, we also wanna play, you know, with safe criteria in mind.
Also, if you get hit, that'll suck. Like, if we get, if we get flash shots.
Yeah, alright, I think this is gonna be the play. And. Okay.
Uh-huh, do I get my smug equity?
Yeah, you do, yeah, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll send you a dollar on Venmo. Okay.
I just lost a lot of love.
Yeah, we got away with it, right?
Hmm. You know what that is?
Good job, Eric.
Yeah, good job, Eric. Is this play easy?
I, I don't see any alternative to running from the back.
My agreement.
Okay, anybody see another play you wanna vote on, or should we?
No, I don't.
Okay, let's run. Yeah, nothing else even close. Okay, two-one.
Uh, I think that we make the anchor.
Like the bar point.
So, uh, the bar point? No, I don't think so. This and that, that's my play. I, I don't make the bar point here. I, I'd say, uh, here, I'd play, I'd make the, I'd make, uh, the twenty-two point. Cuz we got, we're playing gammon safe here, we gotta save the gammon, like, we don't wanna get gammoned here, and just nine to eight, you know?
Yeah, well, if we learned anything from the last play, that we weren't supposed to split there, then maybe we better make the anchor while we got the chance, right? Eric?
Um. Uh, yeah, make the anchor.
Okay.
We are exposed against the blitzing structure, yes.
Okay. Hey, look, we learned something. Where is the, where is the bar point play? Oh, there it is. Eh, not very good.
Wow.
Okay, five-one for the red team.
Yay.
Do we slot the five? Or come out to the eighteen?
Or you could do.
Or come out to the eighteen, it's one or the other.
You kinda mind signing the five if the five was productive, but. I'm gonna have left. Yeah, I, I guess run to the eighteen seems reasonable.
Yeah, I think the eighteen.
I mean, we don't have a one, though, I mean, I guess we could move twenty-four, twenty-three.
And then twenty-three to eighteen.
We could go eleven-six, twenty-four to twenty-three.
Or you could do thirteen-eight, eleven-toe.
Okay, yeah, I'll hold those in the slide-o, and more.
Thirteen-eight, eleven, ten, at least. It, it doesn't put it in direct shot, and it, um. Doesn't put a sixth on the six, but it's still, but it's just so ugly with those stacks.
And seven is the most com, I mean, it's, seven and eight are the most common roles.
Well, this eight is partially blocked as it is.
I agree with Nolan. Yeah, I would say, uh, yeah, you go to the ten point and you play thirteen-eight.
Okay, lots of votes in for twenty-four-eighteen, looks like that's gonna be the play. Okay, here we go. And. Oh, wow.
Huh. Oopsie.
Well, it's the tie.
Basically the same, only.
Well, bringing two down is a tough one, okay.
Nice job, Nolan.
Didn't even consider, uh, two down, did we?
Two down?
Sorry, no, no, no. I, I misread it, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh.
Alright, double twos.
Oh, this is kind of duplicated, we wanna hit on the seven, but then we can't make the advance stinker.
Right.
I mean, I think enough. Uh.
Yeah, we could use five of these instead of four.
Yeah, that'd be amazing. Uh, Loki.
You can make your.
I think that, I think Lo, I think the play is to go to the, 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 our opponent's bar point, to be honest here.
You mean, hit on the, hit on the seven?
No, I don't think, I mean, like, then, I mean, what's our?
You, you wanna do, you wanna do this?
Right.
Yeah, what's our other two?
Okay.
Oh, wait, no, 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 hit him, hit him, hit him.
Just do two there.
Wait, hit him where, on the fourteen?
No, seven, sorry, oh yeah, hit him, hit him on the seven and go to the eleven point, duh. Sorry, that's kind of obvious.
Uh, I would hit him on the fourteen.
I think I wanna hit on the fourteen.
They lose more on the race display.
This, this removes a, uh, important builder.
I disagree.
Okay, alright, Jed, what's your play?
Twenty? Uh.
Jed is muted.
Twenty, I think, uh.
Wow, you keep muting yourself for some reason.
Sorry, uh, I think you make the. You make the eleven point, twenty point, I think.
This is your play, you like this?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and Eric, you wanna hit on the fourteen?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanna hit on the fourteen too. Listen, we have a better board, uh, so I, I wanna mix it up. So, I think we're.
Yeah, I think I disagree with that, to be honest, I think.
Alright, and, uh, they won't be able to point on us with their blitzing structure. Cuz they, they will be missing a die, so it's not as dangerous that.
Yeah, we're, so we're, we're, we're hitting and es, and partially escaping with tempo, okay, so.
Yeah.
Alright, let's do that, and. Yeah, right by a lot.
Wow.
Um. I don't feel too surprised at this.
Yeah, I know, I was thinking, yeah, you're right.
Okay, look at this ugly entering role.
Don't have a lot of choice.
Yeah. Uh.
What are we doing?
Okay. There's not, there's not very many legal plays, so I may as well just put all the legal plays in.
Why, there's a lot of legal plays, what are you talking about?
You gotta come in first.
Four of them.
There's, uh, there's five, actually.
Alright, there you go, five, I put all five legal plays in.
Rick, what do you think?
Use our one free reroll.
Yeah, that's probably the, the move.
We call them mulligan, are we allowed a mulligan?
Yeah, you're allowed one mulligan per game, these are, yeah, did you guys hear about this new rule that they put in?
I think our twenty desperation move. It duplicates a, a lot of their numbers, not, all the other fours are really ugly. Um, it either burn a checker, or we open up a lot of other shots, we might as well get the twenty and see if we can make something happen.
Right.
I think, I like the twenty myself.
Make the twenty.
Hey, and this gave me an idea, maybe for funsies, we should play like backgammon variations sometime, like knack gammon or something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, the one where you roll three dice, and then, but the problem is you can't insert that on XG, the, the three dice.
Directly, but there, you know, there might be some ways of doing it.
Wow.
Knack gammon is easy to do. Cuz that's a, that's specifically an option in XG.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, anyway, the votes are all pretty much for going to the twenty point.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure it's between that and get going to the fourteen. Oh, I'm not that, can't be that sure, eight to four, wow, not bad.
Oh my.
Eight to four.
That's weird.
Okay, let's do a couple more plays, and then, and then we'll, we'll.
Is that because they're kind of giving up and saying, get as many checkers in the back as you can, I mean.
No, not, not really.
Or is it because that, that's the better point to make?
Yeah, I think that's why.
That's the golden point.
Uh, six-four. Obviously, I think we have to hit on the seven, on the bar point.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, yeah.
I think that we could, I, I think I know the play, I think we, oh, but that leaves a lot of shots, oh, it's annoying. I don't know. We could hit.
Hmm, sorry.
Like. I mean, we could hit and come down.
Hit and come down like that? See, I like this play.
Or, yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking about, like, that leaves, let's see, how many shots is this, four times?
Yeah, sir, can you go back to the, to Red's last, uh, analysis?
This leaves six, this is like eighteen shots if we do this.
This, is it what you're talking about, Eric? You wanted to see this?
Yeah, thanks, thank you, yes. Okay.
What the fuck?
Huh?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Yeah, uh, go, yeah, now you can.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, see, I, I kinda like this, uh, nothing else.
Yeah. Well, the, the scary thing about this though is it, it leaves like, around like sixteen shots, so it's like. Kinda scary, but I think it has to be played.
Yeah, but it leaves these shots in a position where they're, they're not ready to, uh.
Yeah.
Attack us, and if, if they enter awkwardly, in addition to their four dancing numbers, if they enter awkwardly, we might be able to just, uh, you know. in addition to their four dancing numbers, if they enter awkwardly, we might be able to just, uh, you know, finish them, finish them off here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Uh, is there, I mean, they're safe plays, you know, we could do, we could do a safe play like this.
No, 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 no. I don't think so.
Okay.
Cuz he's gonna try to make, we don't want him to make the bar point, throw the two.
Eric, what do you think?
Oh, we are, we will be eighteen in the race, like ahead in the race after this play, so uh, this pro compels us to play safer, so to preserve a race lead, so this might be right.
Could be. Are you opposed to the hitting play like this?
I think so, it's, it's, I think it's too much, maybe. I mean, it has a huge upside, but it also has a huge downside if we lose.
The problem is some of that upside, we don't get to claim, the gamins, right?
Yes, that's true. So I I'm leaning towards the safe play, leaning towards the safe play.
Uh, Jed, are you, are you?
Uh, we're playing backgammon here, I would hit.
He wants to hit, okay.
What do you mean by that comment?
Uh, falafel, you know falafel.
Yeah, that's, that sounds like a falafel type quote, yeah. I don't know, this is, this is a tough one. All right, I I'm gonna go along with the hitting play. I I think it's got a lot of upside, and I'm I'm not so worried about uh, their board, but, uh, listen, Eric may be in line for claiming smug equity here. All right, we got about five minutes.
Yeah, you have a point that their board is pretty, pretty bad, so maybe.
Yeah, there's, right, how how much you're getting hit. Okay, I think we're gonna do this, and this is, this will be the last play, and then we'll start next week with the next play. And, oh, yeah. Um, where is fourteen to four? Oh, okay, it's a, it's an error, but it's not, you know, it's not like it's a whopper. It's a pretty reasonable idea. Okay, I think we're gonna stop there, um, I am I'm going to mute everyone and then do a sign-off. All right, thanks for joining the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com.